Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the following principles: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
I want to start off wishing everyone a healthy and happy new year. Healthy is the key thing now. Everybody's got a sickness going around. Wish you all the best. As I said, George won't be here, so luck that he doesn't get coffee. I love you all, we're in Southern West. Approval of the bills. We have a chance to look at our bills? I was in earlier before. Your motion for acceptance? Is your second?
I'm second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the December fourteenth meeting minutes? They were sent to you.
I will send them.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And approval of November ninth meeting minutes?
Our motion?
I'll send.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As I say, things have been pretty quiet here around the holidays like they usually are at all. It's good though. Hopefully our holidays were good. I don't mind working with the family and the grandparents. Not a lot going on. The weather's been really good. Barely been out snowplowing at all, I think a couple, two, three times maybe. So we've saved a lot in overtime and we saved a lot in salt. Price of salt is fifteen dollars a ton, and it's up pretty fast too. So, the weather's good. My thing is, it's nice to be able to take the dogs for a walk in this weather. Something typically this time of year you can't do. And also for the heating of our homes costing a lot. For the electricity and for the gas. Every bit helps. The guys have been picking up the discarded trees along the road, we know their own size as we do every year. Taking down the decorations. Restrooms, as time permits, I'll get into that later in the agenda. We sat down with them to discuss projects and equipment for our next fiscal budget. It's important to get the input of the guys that do the work, get the, you know, use the equipment. They're the ones that can tell you what they need. So we value all the employees' opinions. So I did sit down with them and go over their needs and what would make their jobs easier. Sewer. There's no mechanical problems, which is always good to report for our sewer plant. It's a very fickle plant, so it's good when there's no issues. Again, we did have sizable rainfall last week. We had that rain and we ended up with a couple extra gallons.
Courtney?
Pretty close to a hundred.
Hundred thousand extra gallons of infiltration. So we do have that grant, that study grant, engineering grant. And that money will be used to address infiltration. Run cameras down the sewer lines and fixing, you know, wherever they suspected might be infiltration. So it's, needs to be done. Pleased to announce Eric, our PPW employee. He went to Mooresville and passed his first sewer ops, basic ops, which is great for him. I was at forty-eighty people, took the test and sixteen passed. And they crammed, they crammed a lot of knowledge. I mean, the book is, is this thick and he says they went through the whole book. So it's a matter of class all day long, going back to your room and studying all night. And I'm very, I'm very proud of him that he was able to pass that test because they're not easy tests to pass.
How many, how many tests total did he have yesterday?
Well, there's numerous ones, different class of licenses. He's got to go back to what, February, March for a couple of days?
He'll be going next week for three days, February and then March. So there's, I think Practical Labs is next. Well, it'll be smaller. That was the main one and then the hardest one, hardest one to pass. And ones are a little easier, but they'll do the little tests afterwards. And once those are all done, then he has to get a certain amount of hours in the plan before he can sit tables and get his license.
He's got the hardest one done then?
Yes.
That's really great.
Yeah, he's, he's a great employee. Under the electric, we were, we were going to provide mutual aid to Churchill. Paul, you could probably touch base on this. It was scheduled for tonight at ten o'clock for a shutdown until three in the morning.
Yeah, we canceled that. We've got a little more work to do to prepare for that. So hopefully some weather, warmer weather, warmer temperatures at night. We actually shut down a forty-five customer for thirty-five hours.
Okay.
We'll keep you posted.
Okay.
But thank you for all the assistance you guys have helped us with.
It's mutual. You're always, Churchill's always there for us. Really that you, you may or also, it's great working together. So whatever you need, you know, we're there for you. Guys have been taking down the Christmas lights. They were calling in on Christmas Eve. Rain just came over the high winds and were on the primary lines on North Lake here. So they had to come and get those off before we had any issues. They got a scheduled power shutdown tomorrow at the cell tower. T-Mobile, again, it's scheduled, it's not an emergency, it's being scheduled for a shutdown so T-Mobile can upgrade their electric service. I did get a, it's not in the minutes, mayor's report, but I just got a call from the Landmark Society. Megan Clem is her name. And it had to do with, just four, it was months ago. But it was, it was in connection with the extending the historical downtown area. I remember when Anna was here, mayor, we talked about it. She brought it up and that's when it started. Then the funding ran out. I talked to them at the historical society and I told them that if it should come back again, because they said it would probably be allocated again after January. She just called me. So I said, by all means, we're going to meet with her. I got a call into her now. She didn't return my call this afternoon. So I left a message saying that we would like to sit down with her and go over the whole, the program. See what it entails. And if it's going to be a benefit to the village and the residents, then by all means, we'll, we'll jump on board. So I'll keep you further posted on that after we have a meeting. I'll have a meeting, Courtney will sit down with her and she can explain everything, you know, everything about it. And again, it's going to benefit the village and the residents. I think there's some tax breaks involved in it and for future grants also. If it can expand the historical district more commercial and residential, we could take advantage of it. Okay, that's, that's all I got. Courtney?
No. I've seen my report. The only thing I really like to add to this is that I talked to the dealership today about ordering the Ford F-550 that we had budgeted in the current year. So that got ordered. There's no guarantee that it will come in in a year. It could be a year and a half. The last time around, he said he ordered, last year he ordered, he sent something like eighty trucks and twenty-three of them were produced. So hopefully we get the group that gets produced and we get our truck in this fiscal year that we're working on now.
Is that an electric vehicle?
No. The F-550 is a heavy-duty work truck.
Oh, okay. The breakout date to order that truck is this Friday. So we just got in under the wire to order it. Hopefully we get, we get it this, hopefully it goes through.
I think that's going to be the new normal for this, in this with vehicles.
Yeah. Okay. See all of this in my report.
I like the interest rate on the night class for the 4.04, that's incredible.
Yes.
Do you know how much we're transferring? Around about?
About, just over about.
Okay.
It's a nice, nice one to reach the village.
How, how important is it getting the electric car stations repaired? I'm just wondering if it's, if it's expensive?
Yeah.
You know, to me, I'm looking at like why replace it, especially because it's not, in a way we lose, we lose money on it because we're not doing it and we already got the, like, is there anything with, some of them were gotten through a grant? So if we don't have them?
Well, it's one of those things, depends on who you ask. But you know, a lot of people feel strongly about having them, especially ones who have the electric cars. You know, for now, they just, the breakers pop and we go and turn it back on and then they lots to cut a week or two. And we can still do, keep on doing that, it's not, it's not great. But I think down the road, there is a lot more after that. Newbies and stuff and more of them, something like that. Beat money. We'll probably get newer ones when it comes time to it. If you keep like one dollar a road and push more than you need, it's going to be, it's going to be more. There's nothing we have to worry about right now. But it would be nice to have somebody call me back and tell me what it would take to fix it and how much it would be. But I can't get them done, get them to call me back. I don't know if they don't want to do it or they're just too busy.
Courtney, down the line, when we do have to change these out, what would it cost for a monthly fee for people to have to use a credit card so they would pay for the electric they're using? Any idea?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. It'd be different from what we have in the office. It'd be different to a plan. On top of that, it'd be a cellular, a data plan or two. So the cellular data plan and the point of service charge and badge fee and whatnot.
Typically, it's handled by a third party.
Right.
Paid the disability and things like that.
Do you have a credit card on you, Churchill?
It's capable, but we don't, we don't. It's connected, but it's not, we don't charge for it. We're getting DC fast charges from Power Authority. And those obviously will be charged or paid to use. And I think at that point, I don't pay to use the smaller ones. We'll start seeing that one more.
One second. The ones you get from Power Authority, they're putting it for free or?
They're basically leasing property from the village and then they build it, they own it, they maintain it. And they pay like a consumption like a regular customer. And the village doesn't have to do any kind of service work or anything like that. That's not like a good way to go.
Okay, wait, want to check the dealer on that?
Looking for spots along the interstates, so every chance there, if you really want one.
The electric write-offs really low?
Yeah, and it's in your packets. Very, the last page of your packets is the write-offs. It's not in the audience. You guys' packets because it gives names and specifically what it's doing and stuff. It'd be nice to put that out there, everybody.
Any questions to Paul and Churchill for the log, for the soup hall?
Courtney's idea, I had my secretary made us stand. You folks want to worry us as well, so thanks for the idea, I miss it.
Okay. Any questions on Courtney's report? You all have the CEO's, CEO's report? Any questions on?
We're back to having a hot tube.
Yeah, I see that.
Last time it was a hot tub. We did well, without our pack.
Any questions on any of the reports? If they'll obtain a motion for acceptance of reports?
I'll make the motion to accept the reports, I'll send them.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Privileges on the floor?
Happy New Year everybody.
Yeah. I heard you weren't feeling well too. You were down for a while.
Last week, yeah. Brachitis lasted forever, weeks, weeks, yeah. Better now, thank you.
And those of the village, as I put you out, when the electric side of the street, these cable and telephone guys, I look on their side and see a lot of trees and stuff.
Yeah, they don't care.
I walked on Lake Street, I walked on Lake, I walked from Kent.
It's like that everywhere.
Wow!
You know, it gets so bad if you call a stakeout in for the telephone, if it's underground telephone, they won't even come and mark it. If you hit it, you hit it. They'll fix it if they have to. Most people don't have landlines anymore.
So. Why does that Tim look, he says, "Stop." "Tim goes, "Our trip, but the rest of the wire's up, the rest of the mongers, please." He goes, "You're the last person on mongers, people with landline."
Yeah, there you go.
"Everybody else down the street has."
They're sick of the muddy, the upkeep, the maintenance, they're not getting any revenue off it anymore.
That's when Chris Ferrin's street came down and that wire's been down that long.
Yeah.
And Tim probably got it back. He goes, "No, there's nobody else down there. Everybody's got a cellphone."
Yeah. You would think cable would want to take care of it. I mean, they're thriving right now still, so.
Their stuff works on the ground and their stuff works when the tree contact, unlike electricity though. So like you said, they don't really care. It's a problem, they'll fix it until it is, they don't, they don't come out.
Yeah. Unfortunate.
And you just look at it, wow. Two separate sides of the street.
Yeah.
Just the way you look at it.
Courtney made mention in his report, you know, very proud of our electric guys and the crew. I mean, all the tree trimming, we had these high winds and, you know, it's.
Two of us, yeah.
And, you know, other than that, one call up or a tree blowing across and coming out of lines, they're very well, you know, systems, very strong system, so very proud of them. Anything else? Privileges on the floor?
The guy's probably noticed, I think, Christmas tree lights on the street. And super bark, if I notice that flagpole's not very straight anymore, but.
Well, yeah, it hasn't been straight for a while. We may have to try to. I don't know. I don't know if we can get the, you know, the digger in there or a mini in.
Try to bend it?
I don't know if we can dig next to it and kind of, you know, put the digger on it, the hole it and.
It's only about three feet of concrete, there's not much there.
Yeah, three feet of concrete, yeah, I know.
Came from the school across the street.
That did?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Original school.
No kidding. History here.
I looked here when he said it.
Wow.
We didn't think it was deep enough.
Well, that's why it's perfect.
That's how you know it's deep enough.
We should go out there and fix it. Natural consequences.
Probably true.
I'd paint in the golden bulb before you start back up.
I'm thinking maybe we can dig the one side of it and see what you're hook on to with the digger and.
Yeah, that's how they start with the digger, so we should be able to.
Yeah, I've noticed it's leaning, you know, it's got a good sized flag on it.
It's got two flags.
Yeah.
Because you found out on the wind.
It's, it's really pulling, yeah. Okay, I guess there's flags a lot. Get torn up really quick. All right. Trustee concerns, Emily?
Um, no, we're working on getting the, summer grant program put together. They just couldn't extend it out till February sixth or something like that. So they're sending out some new, they sent out some new paperwork to look at that. So that is, hopefully, I have to see what the new stuff is, but hopefully it's pretty much done.
And it's not encrypted?
Yes. We encrypted everything to the county, so that was, that took a couple of days to figure out. But yeah, so that's coming along well.
I think Courtney mentioned you were going to add on a couple of weeks, hopefully, to the length of it, is it?
Yes, last summer we did six, but it wasn't like planned on, so yeah, hopefully that will be good.
Six weeks?
Yeah, we're going to do six weeks again and, yeah, so hopefully the grant, with that, we're going to increase what we've asked for through the grant, so hopefully we're good then.
Thanks for all your work on that program.
My pleasure. Thank you for my answer.
Do you anticipate employee issues? I know last year we had to kind of jump in and help you out in that way. So we can do something we can cut off now.
Hopefully, yeah, hopefully we can with just an asking for additional funding and stuff because it was kind of.
It's tough for you, yeah, we don't have workers.
Yeah, and I think it's, we saw what happened last year, so it's like, okay, we're ready for, we're ready for those same numbers because we almost tripled our number last summer.
A lot of young families in the village now.
So. And I think having it six weeks really draws in a bigger crowd. You know, it's more of a summer. Yeah, hopefully we don't have any of those issues this summer.
So no concerns on my end, Joe, just, I'm there. Just some residents, again, on Courtney's point, were just really impressed in during those winter storms and not losing power. And they're proud of the village, you know, during the second, we were all hunkered in and listening to what's happening out there. Waiting, you know, but heads off on the comments, I heard.
Good, good.
I'm always really discerning, but I think we really need to take a hard look at our vacation, or I'm sorry, our holidays schedule plan. Particularly Martin Luther King Day. We're going to be one of the only government entities that are even open on that day. So probably too late to do something this year, but certainly something I'd look at moving forward.
Okay, I see your point.
Can I ask a question on that?
Go ahead.
Do the village employees get a floating holiday?
No, no. When we get, it's kind of floating, but it's, we get the day after Thanksgiving and we get the, what, day after Christmas?
Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, Thanksgiving, the day after Thanksgiving.
So many total, eleven?
Eleven total, but no workers.
I was just wondering if you were working on Martin Luther King Day because an extra day had been given somewhere else?
No.
It does, okay.
The board decides, you know, what days they give off. New Year's is there.
They're also negotiating the contract with the union.
Yeah.
There's no floor, you can just float it around. Okay. New business, 2023, 2024 budget discussion? You all got your packs?
Before I start, I was going to, just as I was typing up the highlights, I maybe think of Bob DeLay. And he, especially this time during budget time, he'd always ask me for, you know, always, you know, "How's the village doing financially, you know, where are we at, what would you give us for grade?" So I thought about him when I was doing this and, I, I don't know. So I was just thinking about what grade I would give him. So really, you know, we're doing really well right now. So I'd probably give us a good solid B+. Really good guy.
Good man, yes.
But it's true, it's been quite a while since we have been so solid. We mostly, you know, with the money going into night class, that revenue stream is new, which is, you know, anytime you have a new revenue stream, it's great, especially when it's that much. Look at how we increased the rents on the taller building, which also generated almost $10,000 in revenue. We increased use of sage as additional revenue. You know, there's a, having the cell tower, you know, that's great revenue also. Anytime or you can obviously get a new revenue stream or increase your revenue stream, that's not increasing taxpayers' dollars, it's, you know, ideal. So you know, you definitely think in these times and in this day and age, you have to really hit outside of box and find revenue streams that given, increasing taxes. Because in lots of places, that's, you know, mainly all they have to do is revenue is taxes. It's really good for us that we have additional revenue streams. We're not buying as much vehicles this year, so that money can be kind of distributed a little bit. But under the highlights, you're probably reading it, you know, we're not getting the shared revenue distribution. That used to be sales tax from the county. You know, that agreement was put in, the new agreement was put in 2020. And so it gives us a flat rate for 10 years. So we're going to be getting that same amount 10 years, which is good, it's just guaranteed funds. You know, it's not going up, but it's better than that, like being completely. In the budget, there's no property tax increase. As you all know, the assessments last year went up. So with that going up, it would affect our budget this year. And by decreasing our rate, we'll keep the cost for the residents the same. We're going to impact, so there's the night class, the apartment rent increases. And just so you're, if you're wondering, the apartments and business rent, especially the apartments, are still very reasonable. It's not like we're trying to get too much. They're probably a bit, quite a bit lower than a lot of places are right now. So we're not gouging our renters. One of the important things I think we have to talk about going forward is when Eric gets his sewer license, how are we going to pay him for that? If he has two-way license, we could consider him as a sewer operator and bump him up to the rate of a sewer operator. But if he, if he's just really not having an MEO, he should probably get additional funds for having that sewer license because, I mean, there are sewers operators everywhere. So we don't want him to get stank away from us, but, so we had nothing about that. But also Chris, as Chris goes to take his license, his 3A license, so we're from two-way to 3A. He should be compensated for that as well. So it's something to think about and figure out how to plan for that.
Is he planning to do that this year?
Don't worry.
Are there standard rates throughout the area or is that, is that something that's been researched? Like what stuff they would be eligible for?
Yeah, I mean, it's really different each place, like with other. Yeah, I mean, it's really different each place, like, we have the other, but we, we have the, um, salary lists from, um, for GAM and for NICOM.
Okay.
Kind of idea, but it's, it's hard, so, because, you know, um,
I mean, we can pay Rochester rates, obviously.
Exactly, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you wanna compensate so that we're keeping our people.
Right.
Okay.
For other street maintenance, uh, we talked about what things that we wanted to do, um, we have the, you know, every year we seal the parking lots, drive, is that the own, um, Parkview, the shoulders, um, have always crumbled and been not too good, uh, the guys, um, shared them up last year, and they did a good job, so this year, sure was thinking about, um, doing that micro seal again, that we did last year on that road, and it's, it's pretty wide and pretty long, so it'll be fairly costly, but that road hasn't really had much done to it over the years, uh, it's something that, uh, needs to get done for it to period, so, um, the area from Rochester to Clinton Street, there's some issues there, and we talked about, um, Millenville, that, and then repair potholes and other general road maintenance that we have to do. I, I feel like we're doing pretty good with our roads, I don't think we have any, like, really bad roads or pothole or issues, so it gets us, it's, it's good that we're ahead of it, same thing with sidewalks, um, there are some issues on sidewalks where they have some tripping hazards here and there, but if we can stay ahead of it and, and replace the things that need to be replaced, then we'll have, you know, keep up the nice stuff and just maintenance and that. Spent a lot of money all at once, it passed.
Rob, and I'm sure you're aware of Rochester Street, you drive it a lot, as I do, and you know how it's, right past Clinton there, it's, you, you kind of drive around it, right?
Yep.
Yeah, what, what was done there is when they did Rochester Street, they, they ended there, and they didn't come all the way down to nineteen. So that's why this needs to be addressed now, so, and there's a couple of other wavy spots in there too, from, from nineteen to Clinton, so that's why it's in this next budget to, uh, mill it out and to, uh, repave it.
For equipment, uh, we don't have a whole lot to replace this year. And, you know, it's, it's great right now, again, uh, it helps the budget again, because there's no debt in general, uh, no debt in, um, oh, I made a huge mistake right there, uh, it says there is no debt in general fund or sewer fund, uh, you can cross out sewer,
Sewer, yeah.
and put electric there, um, sewer has a tremendous amount of debt, and we have more debt, um, here in the next couple of years, as sewer, so, how the sewer projects for grass, um, they go through the process, once they're done, then there's, the van's getting closed out and, and permanent financing being put in place, so it'll be two, three budgets before we really see that stuff hitting the budgets permanently, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be rough. But electric in general have, uh, no debt right now, except for payments on the big pile truck and the, uh, bucket truck. Money in the budget addition for parks, we have the ARPA money, uh, I think a good time with the ARPA money, put the parts and the wire money in there, and do more parts, parts committee has really nice ideas. Workers' comp, that was a, uh, good bill to get from the county that crap quite a bit, so we're happy with that. Little highlight, I can go through the, um, so, uh, and I did, uh, wonderful list, get the, uh, which one I talked about it, and I, I put four percent increase in there for the police. So that's something, um, we can discuss. So do you want me to go down through this?
Yeah, I'm gonna start out.
So under revenue general, um, real property tax, we've got the same, I don't know the reason anyone, uh, might get their pilot is the money we get from the electric, that every year, I'm sure with that, uh, real property tax, tryst penalties, sale tax revenue from the county, uh, said that's a set number, so we're meeting that, uh, the franchise fees, uh, we get from people, cable companies, uh, having their, um, infrastructure in town. It's one of those funny things that happened years ago to, to, uh, give money to the, uh, communities that are still going on, but it's, lucky to get thirteen thousand five hundred.
I always see it on my bill, franchise fee, I say, yeah, they're paying us, but they're getting the money back from all the customers anyways, so it's not coming out of their pocket, you know what I mean? You look at your spectrum bill, it's on there.
Yeah, I, I, you know, like I said, it's certainly having luck, but they, they started paying us a long time ago. Uh, our stuff is small, and then we get down to refuse and garbage charge, um, that's the money we take in for, um, all our garbage pickup, but later on you'll see that just goes back out to the, um, caller. Here's another source of revenue that I did not mention in the, uh, highlights, I put this on here, uh, new this year, uh, I didn't have it on there last year, uh, general services, intergovernment, so that is the money that the town pays to the village for us to do, um, their bookkeeping, uh, actually their payroll, so that's seventy-five hundred dollars more, uh, you know, revenue that we've gotten. Which is great. Hundred interest and earnings, you can see that has gone up tremendously, to be able to go from pennies really, um, to twenty thousand dollars, a huge win for the village. And that's just for the general portion, when you put my night, uh, in, into night class, it's divided up by fund, um, so each fund's portion of interest will be given for that. Uh, cell tower, uh, that's per the contract, two percent escalator, um, plus they give us a couple of times a year additional revenue off of any additional tenants they put on that cell tower. The Tully building, like I said, I increased, uh, rent a little bit, but I think over the course of the next few years, um, have to raise it a little bit, um, each year, don't wanna do it too much all at once, uh, to get us caught up to a point where it's closer to fair market value. Sage Pavilion, uh, as I said in my report, it's been rented out, um, what did I say, sixty-eight times this, this year, it's pretty tremendous, um, so, you know, two to three hundred dollars per, per time, so the amount that we've made off of that has been really good, um, so that's an additional revenue stream for us. Uh, licensing permits, minimal unclassified revenue, I guess could oversell the equipment, sales of equipment, um, you know, we have very little to sell this, this year, so, um, we'll see how it goes, I put thirty in there, uh, I'm not sure when the, uh, if we sell to five fifty, um, this budget year, or actually this budget year, money out, when we get the new one, uh, so it's just, ballpark. Unclassified revenues, it says revenues that we don't count on and just come in. So I'll leave it at that number. State paid for Capita in evening, um, it's been about the same, you know, twelve, ten, twelve years I've been here. Lot less chips, the high number of chips, uh, for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, um, actuels, um, it's just, it's not, uh, we did that, all that work in one year, it's just, that's how we got the payment back from, we got reversed in fiscal years, it looks like it's all on, it's really, just that it was how they paid us back, how we got reversed from that. So under, so appropriations, from the next page, um, as I said, you know, menu for, under, uh, PS is called, um, personal services and just labor, um, so, uh, if I could take all personal service lines and get rid of them, and just put it under one line, I would, that'd make it a lot easier for, uh, looking at the budget, um, but, so I'm gonna kind of, skip over the personal service numbers, so that way you can look at them as we go, um, but the way, we have to pay, uh, every employee two thousand eighty hours, so I, I do that in my budget, uh, everybody two thousand eighty hours, so I read my algorithm, I, um, put in there where I think they're gonna work in each line, and then it, uh, prefills a dollar amount in, um, these lines, um, but if they don't work in, say, Central Garage, um, half the time I allotted, they'll work yet somewhere else, so in the end, it's all gonna just balance out anyway. So they'll all get paid, uh, two thousand eighty hours plus per time, minus second time or not, but we account for that differently. So I'll just hit the contractuals and the main parts, if that's okay. So you fill your board contractual, that's money there for running supplies and training, ordinating, see if the mayor, clerk, treasurer's name, and some of my pay line, and my contractual, see, I, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, I really have used my contractual, forty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents for, uh, yeah, we had an auditor, um, I used for an auditor, uh, a while because part of this, all that work, and Marv's pay line, uh, or, um, that's, I'm sorry, that's from Treasurer Renee, uh, her contractual, see, I haven't really used her contractuals in a while, you know, but if we ever have training to go to, or choose to go to NICOM, those are money's there. I turned it, used to turn it a little bit this, that last fiscal year, um, but, uh, I wanted to keep it at six thousand, just because, you never know when it might come up, that would be a good turnip for engineers, same reason, there's not, uh, most times engineer, use an engineer, uh, it's either through the grant, the grant pays for it, or it's through, um, like sewer projects, and the project pays for it, so we don't have too much to do for it, but we need that in there, just, just needs, we have some. Elections, we have election in March. Oh, you know what? No, then we'll have an election after that, yeah, so election in March, you know, we'll have another, in bottom March, which is, yeah, this is what we got. So that needs to be in there, uh, public works administration, we don't have a DPW supervisor, so that's zeros. Buildings, have personal services, equipment, uh, equipment, I don't want to put anything in the equipment line, if it's over five thousand dollars, that can be depreciated. Usually, uh, buildings, buildings line takes up a lot of stuff, uh, from phones and, and cleaning and internet and all those things, of course. Some buildings, part of that, building. Central Garage, personal services, uh, Central Garage equipment, um, forty thousand dollars is, um, about what, uh, sort of a zero turn, I wanted to put a little bit of money in there just in case, see what the, the, we have a, a dollar number of trucks and the cost, we have money in the current budget and, and the, um, equipment fund that, uh, we put together last year, but I just wanted a little extra, just in case, um, those costs go up, or, um, some other equipment we need throughout the year, just in case. Central Garage, that catches a lot of different things too, uh, vehicles need, you know, oil for, up there, maintaining equipment and whatnot. Uh, central communications, I bumped that up, uh, two thousand dollars from previous year, because as you can see, um, those costs went up, and they've been pretty consistent over the last three years, so bumped it up to five thousand, it was more in line with expenses. Center store room, same thing with there, costs went up there, so I bumped that up to two thousand. Data processing, uh, with the, we're still paying, we still have a year or two to pay for the phones, and, uh, so, that on top of, um, computer costs, but, uh, so I just wanted to bump it up to a thousand, cover all those things. It'll be a relief when the phones are paid off, uh, saving some money, but we elected to pay them over time rather than pay cash all the time, so. Uh, Nymer Insurance, um, that's the general portion of, uh, our insurance coverage, um, pretty happy with Nymer and Lolly Insurance Company, um, we met with, um, talked about before, met with a different insurance company, um, so, I guess, to put out to you guys whether you're interested in changing or not.
I like we had, um, we have a
The He?
He.
I think it's That's better. Yeah. So you have enough to, to, uh, medical dues for any association that we belong to. Taxes and assessment, uh, that's the taxes that we pay on this building, that, um, should we pay tax on this building for the parts that are not used by us, or the partners in the businesses that, uh, get the taxes on, that's where that comes from. Contingency account, uh, you might remember from years past, I, it's an odd number, because I use that spot to balance the budget, so it's zero. I put more money in there, um, so we had it available, and it's always good to have that cushion. Equipment fund, um, last year we started with equipment fund, but money away, um, if you wanna keep on doing that, hopefully have that fund built up, so soon that when we go to buy any equipment, the money comes right out of the equipment fund, uh, and not the budget, so that way the budget's pretty well flat, but year to year to year, um, makes it a lot easier to budget for, if you don't have big ups and downs. We had in the past where, you know, we spent, you know, ninety thousand dollars on equipment, um, and then next year we have a couple things, or we do a lot of road work, and then another year we do nothing, so we have these big swings, and, uh, you know, this way it's just very inconsistent, so how it, and, 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 uh, these are the maintain costs. Uh, public safety, um, we put streetlights under public safety, so that's, uh, most of that is, place and constable, uh, fifteen thousand dollars is for the additional patrols by Sheriff's Department, uh, C twenty-one, twenty-two, they did very little patrols, but last time when we met with, uh, that, they, we're gonna get back to it.
It could be up this year, because they added on some deputies, they were really short of deputies, so they didn't have the manpower to, you know, with the extra overtime, even come out and patrol, so now they have added some deputies, so I think we'll, you see closer to this figure, this budget.
Yeah, I hope so, uh, it's really good when they're out and about, they're seen, slowing people down, bringing tickets. Fire department, PS, there's nothing under there. They haven't been for, really, really for a long time, it hasn't been used since Count Nukem worked here. And he would go to calls, so, but I leave it there. Barb has her, is part of the fire department at EMT. So if she responds to a call, I believe that's fine. Fire protection, that's a contract that we have with the fire department, fire services. Safety inspection. Gary, code officer. He has contractual. The street maintenance, we moved that up to twenty thousand dollars, additional twenty thousand to sixty thousand. I think park view is gonna be a little spending. And then the milling, milling doesn't usually cost too much, but the milling and the paving will add up as well. So bump that up so we can sure we can take care of those two things. Maintenance, that comes out, that we Snow plowing, personal services, snow plowing, snow mow. Anything for salt and rubber for name and all those things you need for snow. Sidewalks, I put additional five thousand dollars in sidewalks and we did a good amount last year. But it doesn't go as far as you would think. You walk around, like I said, the sidewalks are in pretty good shape, but there's a few spots that really need to be fixed that are tripping hazards. The tiles are broken and, you know, there's a difference there. We talked to a guy about coming in with a machine and, well, actually the guy did this year, right? They used the drum machine to take the
Mellet?
Yeah. Basically, yeah.
Trip hazards.
Yeah, so they did that, it was slow going, so they'll probably do somewhat more, they'll do more of that, more of that this year. And then tile, that'll really turn the place. Parks, personal services for, it's been done in March. Parks equipment, I need to change that, I didn't mean to put twenty thousand dollars there. I meant to put it down into parks contractual. I feel like we have funds available, we have ARPA money, maybe working on parks. We put a little additional money of our own, we can get some of the projects further. I think it's a good time to do that. Twenty thousand to parks contractual, not parks.
So that's gonna be zero, that would be correct?
Yes, that's correct. So I don't know if we need twenty-five in parks, we may even think that, actually. Joe, you said you wanted to increase celebrations. I don't know if you want five thousand.
Not really that much.
So we got that five thousand. Where we leave some of it into parks or
Even sidewalks, you can only use it in sidewalks.
Right. House age for personal services, the cleaning, taking care of sage, sage pavilion. Contractual, just for the electric, the gas, the water, cleaning supplies, talking about stuff. Library funding, that's where we, where we pay library. Youth programs, I added three thousand dollars to youth programs. Could warn the parks, but I thought if you put under youth programs here, it'd be easily, it won't be seen in your mark four somewhere.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember what the number was.
So this is above, what was the budget, three thousand above the budget last year? Yeah, so we can
Yeah, we'll see what that matches with, with what, we fill that with the paperwork.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, maybe we could take some of that money from parks and place it into, make sure that's covered. Historian, last year we didn't know about historian, put two thousand in there, just as a round number. And overpaying Vicki about hundred, which is what Ray was being paid. I think we went above Ray to fifteen towards the end there. And there's historic contractual. Celebrations, they've done, whatever needs to be done to some things around town for celebrations. Christmas lights. Celebration contractual, Joe mentioned about, that you wanted to increase.
Yeah, the, for CS having to spend money on Christmas lights next year. So more commercial duty, heavier duty lights, like for the big tree here. With the wind and everything, it just, it's cheap. String lights, they, they just don't hold up. And they do sell a heavier gauge wire, commercial Christmas light. And also the wreaths are gonna be needing new lights. And we may have to see about new LEDs to grow up lights that come down the falls. So there's gonna be some Christmas decorations in there. Over and above what we normally have for celebrations for that line item, so that's why.
This year they had to string the tree three times. They just put it up once and it worked and then a little bit later, you know, Wendy in the middle section went out. So they replaced that and then had to go buy more and then had another section that went bad. So they had to mess with it a bunch.
It's, it's nice lighting up that big tree in the center of the village, so.
I mean, who else has a giant Christmas tree in the middle of their village day? I would like to see a star or some sort of something at the top. You just have a wreath, but that, that kind of went bad.
Yeah, the wind, the wind just
Yeah, it's hard in the middle of like Georgetown, Rochester. I would like to see something up there.
That's where the Melvex for an increase on the line item, covering the coffee, heavier duty lights.
Where did you want to increase that to?
I, I would say another two thousand dollars there, fifteen hundred to two thousand. Fifteen hundred? Go up to four.
Emily, you let me know about the youth programs and then we'll increase that. There you go. Dog, I reached me nothing there. Tree board, it's a contractual. It's only, that's, yes, it's for Gary also, he's, he's got a couple lines. It's only contractual. Planning, personal services, part Gary, part planning board. Some terms there, storm sewers, I increased storm sewer contractual by a couple thousand. There is a storm sewer project that we're looking at to alleviate water. Joe mentioned that we're cat racing in Hunter Street to relieve some water damage issues there. So the refuse brush, personal services, now that is for our guys to actually go out and pick up the brush around town. The refuse brush contractual is for the refuse pickup, garbage pickup. That is a little confusing there, but
Courtney, when does that contract expire?
Because Yeah, so three years.
Are we covered?
Yes. So we, we got it twenty-one, three, four years. Same, so that and the September, I'll make it to the same time.
Okay.
Communication, increase the communication by a thousand dollars.
I think we can do something down at the gazebo, put some kind of shrubs or something around to dress it up a little bit. It looks so plain and, I don't know, we'll have to put some topsoil on there because of the ground, I don't know. We tried planting trees there a few times and they died every time we planted a nice evergreen there. But I don't know, shrubs might be a different story. But it would be nice to put some flower in the shrubbery around that. Possibly a little sidewalk, off the sidewalk existing, to get to the steps of the gazebo and do this.
Drainage, just getting rid of some rain issues, shade trees. Contractual, two thousand dollars, we increased it, money for the trees, tree city program. And we have state retirement, social security, numbers comp, see the decrease numbers comp there. Disability insurance. Medical insurance, build share, paid time off, sick pay payout. Health insurance buyout, health insurance buyout went down because that is in the union. Now he doesn't, he has insurance through the union, so he doesn't have to get the buyout. Debt service and a bond, that is really just the payment on the
As we get from the county work, we'd like to get, we have thirty-five fifty on our
Okay.
On our, okay.
How much did we ask?
Twenty-one?
Twenty-one, we got with the
Um, yeah.
You think we'll know by April or March, you just got, put some money in there just in case?
I don't know, I don't know how, when it comes. I'll look at the, the paperwork that I have and see if there's an indication of when, you can get confirmation on it. But I'm not sure when you get that. And it will depend, I'm waiting to hear back from the town. I mean, they did give a ton, but they gave, I think they gave six hundred. So I hope that I do that from the town.
Thank you. So it's under budget. Any questions or thoughts or changes?
Take these all over, look them over, make changes.
Are you still thinking of doing the park driveway, like from park view all the way through to the way from the car? The park, you're talking about the car and that? Who catches the park? Keep the car in the path all the way through?
Oh, yeah, well, that's part of the plan, once we see what's left over with the ARPA money.
Okay.
To, yeah, that's what we're hoping for anyways, yeah, to do that.
You, you own the driveway out past the house, right, past the park?
Yeah.
That's always kind of relevant, that. Maybe you do that, guys, hey, you get the contractor, give me a driveway while you're doing that. I'll, you know, I'll pay for it, but today's having a driveway there. You just pull them on and do what's
Yeah, so if you have any questions or contacts, I've seen any boards, so. I, I put four percent in here raised for the employees. Inflation being what it was the last two years, being over seven. That's something we could nice to discuss. Talk to Luke about, Joe, that's a poor decision, so.
Do you want to get together and have a budget meeting, a couple weeks or something? Take these home, come over.
Maybe, I do.
We can make some changes at that point, discuss whatever needs to be discussed. Why don't we do that, a couple weeks? What do you, yeah, what do you
Different cover.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get through tonight, so let's just keep moving. You guys schedule whatever you want, I'll come if I can.
Okay. Understood. Very, yeah, well understood. All right, yeah.
It won't take that long, we'll sit down and, you want to do it on
twenty-fifth? Or it could even be next week, a week, two weeks, what's better for everybody?
I'm hoping it is. I don't know. We should, we can, we're in early, yeah, you know, so we have February and March.
You want to wait?
Well, it's up to you guys, you want to do it
How comfortable are you with it, you know, do you think it's pretty close now, everybody?
Honestly, yeah. We have to go over the sewer and electric, the sewer is very small. Electric fund is, you know, a crap shoot based on energy sales. Right, yeah, so, yeah, it's, you know, I say it every year, it's so complex and it's a more profit enterprise fund, you know, can make money.
Being like Courtney, it's early, I'm comfortable, if you just wanted to, next meeting, board meeting we have? Put it on the agenda too, when we go through it?
Yes, the budget looks, at face value, looks great. You know, I suspect having a lot of concerns, but definitely about the sewer, you know, those types of things.
Well, that's, yeah, we can do the sewer and electric at the next
That would be, that would be good, and then if we need a meeting, we can do that.
Take these home, if you have any questions, get ahold of Courtney. You'll get answers prior to the meeting. Okay, we'll put this on the next agenda. Your new business. We have a, next thing is the resolution one of twenty twenty-three abolishing the registration day. Whenever there's an election in the village, we, we have to pass this resolution. We've been doing it for a lot of years. If people want to be registered, they go to the county, which is in Katia, and they register there.
And you have the, they work out the hallway.
You can pick the implications, or you can mail them in, or you could bring them in by hand, hand them in to the Board of Elections in City Katia.
So, excuse me, so I don't understand that last paragraph. Hereby resolving and abolishing registration day, I don't, I don't understand it. Can you explain that to me? What are you abolishing? We do, we've never had a specific registration date in the village itself, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so then what are we abolishing?
So every day, every time you have an election, you have to go through the steps to say you're not gonna have a registration day. So we've did, every election, we've done this, this
So it's really nothing new because people can still register at the Board of Elections?
Exactly. Exactly, so if you have registration day, somebody can come in here and register to vote just for a village election.
Okay.
And not for, to general elections.
Okay.
Which, you know, so that means I would have to keep a role of people who.
Okay.
Registered here and get the role from the county. To me, it's just a lot easier and cleaner if everybody just registers at the county, and the county goes through all that paperwork.
Thank you.
I will second.
Okay, motion, they made it seconded to abolish the registration day. The village, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution two of twenty twenty-three, designation of the polling place and time for March twenty twenty-three general village election.
I'll make a question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the approval of new fire department members, which is always a good thing. As it says, all the background checks have been completed for all these members. And they're looking for our amount of approval.
Do you need a motion?
I need a motion.
I will make a motion.
You're a second.
I will second.
The motion made seconded to accept these individuals for. Joining the version fire department, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you very much. That's encouraging. Six new members, so.
Yeah, that's really good. They're, a lot of them are.
It's great.
Really good people.
Hickory Park bathroom update. I'll be honest, not a lot's been done there in the last month. Eric, Eric's the head guy that works for our village, he was at sewer school for two weeks. And everything else that's been going on, red books, the holidays and everything. Not a lot got, has been done tomorrow, though, we are taking a trip to get the toilets. Set the time and date with the guys to pick up the toilets and see about the sinks and the hand dryers. And handrails and all, all that equipment that we're gonna need for that project. They, I believe, went today, they picked up a lot of the supplies to build the walls and plumbing, and all the plumbing supplies you're gonna need. Need carpentry supplies to get going on this, so we'll, we'll be hitting it down. Like I said, Eric's gonna be gone a few days, you know, in the next couple of months. But we'll work around that, we'll work around the snow removal also. You gotta, you know, take care of the village first, and then as time permits. Got to be in there working on this, on the bathroom.
Well, I got a pretty handy guy who does stuff too, if you're ever looking for a little more help.
Okay.
It was about.
Appreciate that. Okay, everybody has the study here, you know, for the P L M engineering. Do with the, to get the ball rolling with the substation. I asked Courtney to email you this, so you can look it over prior to the meeting. And we have to start someplace. It's a way to start, so. Planned on doing this after the New Year's, after our bond was paid off for electric. Debt was paid there, and it's time to proceed with the upgrade of our substation. I would ask that we would pass this, the board would pass this, the commotion passes, so we can contact them, and they can get on board and start the study. The top end of this is fourteen thousand, three hundred dollars, not to exceed that, it's a time and material. It would be a time and material contract, so it's maybe how long it takes them to do it, it's, it'll depend on what, you know, the cost.
Um, I know I asked this before, but I can't remember it. This is, this was something we sent out for bid, or this is just something we went to this specific company for?
This specific company, engineering, we don't have to go out to bid for.
All right, I think I asked, I just didn't remember.
They come highly, the municipals, they come highly recommended, it's wonderful.
Yeah, they've done like everybody in the area or something, right?
They manage N I P, N I P O as well, so that we're very, very well. I've worked with them on a rig case, working with them on a rig case too. They're a very reputable firm, you know, Mark Pogero?
Yeah.
Top-notch guy.
Yeah, and all the ones that follow them. But it's, it's time to. Get the ball rolling on this.
So you want a motion for this study?
Yes.
Are you looking for that this meeting?
Yes. Unless you need more time to digest this.
I would like the, our, you know, Mr. Shudding to be present and perhaps look at this as well. Just if he had any other eyes and concerns, issues, thoughts, I just looked at this this week, so.
Okay. I, no, I.
Can it wait?
Yeah, oh, sure.
This is just for the study portion, right?
Yes. We can look it over more, and if you have any other questions, bring it up, and we can, we can bring it up to the next meeting.
Yeah. You can make a motion, but I don't stay today.
Okay, let's hold off then and, you know. But, you know, a monk isn't gonna matter on this.
Okay.
Why is this two cents in case I'm not hearing it? Um, but honestly, it's like, to me, it seems fairly reasonable for a six-month study and things like that, and it has to be done, so. That's my, my two cents, just, you know, so you have it, if you want it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for the question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Why is this dated December twenty twenty?
That's just a mistake on the front, I noticed that too.
Well, it's supposed to be twenty twenty-two.
Yes, he contacted me back in December. Well, I contacted him, I should say, we discussed it, and then he sent this. You know, the email, yeah, it's definitely, should have been twenty twenty-two.
I wasn't sure if they were gonna be starting it, proposing to start in December twenty twenty.
No, it's, yeah, do you have a copy of it? Yeah, I think it says, well, maybe it was insane, in the email, he said he'd, he'd be willing, able to start on this project in January. Beginning of January, so.
Is there a date, a timeframe on that, the offer? Like it's not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think a monk is gonna matter, I mean, I mean, about six months or, it might matter, but I don't think a monk, I can contest.
They're selling services, not material.
Yeah. Oh, we can, yeah, we can wait a month.
I, again, I would just like the, the missing trustee to take it again, I know his expertise in electrical. Just to give his thoughts.
Okay, I'm real proud of that. Do you have any other questions before we move? While we're planning on putting that up at the next meeting. Anything else before I proceed to close? Okay, take a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second? All in favor? Thank you for your time.
Second, is that?
You got a piece somewhere? Anywhere.